The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order if you would rise as you are able and give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Pastor Clarence Bullock, Sr., if he would come to the podium. He is a man of God. He's new to District 3. He's located at the New Hope Community Baptist Church, 436 Southeast Fairfax Drive. And what I like about him, he's really humble. But what I love about him is he's already joined the NIA group, East End, and he's doing big things, him and his congregation. They're taking on the challenge of kids and trying to feed people around there and clean up. They were doing things at the cleanup. So I think that's awesome when you just bring out your church and just want to be a part of that. And he said he's not done yet, so we'll hear what else. Pastor Bullock.
We'd like to say good evening to everyone that is here. And certainly, which is respectful and always honorable, is we give honor to our Father, God, which is the head of my life. And then we also give honor this evening to the mayor of our prosperous city, Mayor Garth. And then finally, I'd like to just say thank you to Councilwoman Mrs. Sylvia Ortiz and to all the rest of these council members that are here and to all of you that makes up this gathering. We're just full of joy this evening. Anytime God's people have an opportunity to come together, it is a great thing for us to come together and praise the one that made it possible for all of us. We just bring greetings from New Hope Community Baptist Church. As Sister Ortiz has said, that we are new in the community and we are trying to expose the church in our work and our endeavors to try to make the city, as you are doing, a better place for others to live. If you'll join me in prayer, we are going to bow now. Lord, Thou hast been Thy dwelling place in all generations, even before Thou hast brought forth the mountains or ever Thou hast formed the earth and the world through everlasting and through everlasting Thou art God. Father, we come just now with bowed down heads and humble hearts thanking You, Father, for another day, one that we hadn't witnessed before. But just because You've been God all by Yourself, Father, You enabled us to come together one more time, and we thank You for that right now. Father, we pray that Thou would look at the concerns that are on these tables, Father, that will concern the prosperity of this city. We pray that You move in a mighty way. Father, that You will help these minds and these hearts to come together that the city of Topeka may be a greater place to live and for childrens to come up through. Father, we pray Thy blessings upon this gathering, upon the mayor and all of the movements of this city. We ask that You will look at those families that's here in support, Father, that has come out to render and support the cause and concerns of this city. We pray that You will bind us so close that one can't fall without the other, Father. Then give us love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast and bind us on one common cause. We ask these saints in Thy Son Jesus' name, and in His name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first proclamation this evening is one that we do annually this time of the year, usually the last council meeting in April, and that's pertaining to Law Day, which is always the first part of May. With me is Laura Graham, the president of the Topeka Bar Association, and also...
Vincent Cox.
Kyle Mead.
Jim Rankin.
Thank you for being here. We have a proclamation where as Law Day 2016 recognizes the 50th anniversary of one of the nation's best-known United States Supreme Court cases, Miranda versus Arizona, and whereas Miranda versus Arizona and the Miranda warning that was established in that case is an example of the important procedural protections afforded to all Americans by the United States Constitution, and whereas this year's Law Day theme, Miranda More Than Words, recognizes the important role that courts serve in upholding the procedural protections afforded by the United States Constitution, which are essential to protecting the liberty of all Americans. And whereas Law Day has been an annual observance since President Eisenhower established it in 1958 as a day of national dedication to the principle of government under law, and now therefore I, Larry Wogast, mayor of Topeka, do hereby proclaim May 1, 2016 as Law Day and call upon the people of Topeka to acknowledge the importance of our court and judicial systems. With that, would you like to make comments?
Thank you so much, Mayor Wogast, and council members. We really appreciate you recognizing this day yet again. As you said, you've annually done so for quite a number of years, and the fact that this is the 50th anniversary makes it particularly exciting. I do just want to thank Vince Cox, who has chaired our Law Day Committee for yet another year and has done a great job, with he and his committee members, putting this together. We do also have a coloring contest. We are going to be awarding $25 gift cards to the winners of that for kindergarten through fifth grade, and one winner in each class, so they'll go home happy students in a few weeks. And in addition to that, we have a community service project planned for April 30th. Our members and some of the others we recruit to come along with us will be cleaning up our community, so look forward to that. Thank you again so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Our second proclamation is a new one that we haven't had. Please come on up. And I bet there are few, if any, who are familiar with this. I have here... Let's put it right here. Now, I know, I don't think you're going to see all of this. It's a Shooting Star Equine Rescue. Anybody know what that is? All right. With me here is Corrine Kane, the founder and president, and Mary Hickman, a volunteer with the organization, and we'll tell you a little bit about it. Whereas, the ASPCA National Help a Horse Day was first recognized in April 26, 1866, when Henry Berg stopped a cart driver from beating his horse, resulting in the first arrest for the mistreatment of a horse. And whereas, Shooting Star Equine Rescue has been serving the Topeka community for over 15 years and striving to respond to the needs of the abused, abandoned, and neglected equines by offering rehabilitation, sanctuary, adoption, community education. And whereas, in the city of Topeka, Shooting Star Equine Rescue is celebrating the 150th ASPCA Help a Horse Day on April 23 in partnership with Fairlawn Plaza Mall by holding an event to raise awareness of the mistreatment of horses and our role in providing responsible caretaking. So now therefore I, Larry Wogast, mayor of Topeka, do hereby proclaim April 26 as Shooting Star Equine Incorporated ASPCA Help a Horse Day. So that's a mouthful, but it sounds like a pretty good organization, what they do. Are you going to have some horses at Fairlawn Plaza?
We are going to have two horses at Fairlawn Plaza. We'll have one of our minis, as well as one of the horses that actually paints with a paintbrush in his mouth, so yes, we will.
Children, families, it's for you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we have a couple other recognitions that we want to make. First of all, coming up is an AmeriCorps team that came to Topeka. Actually, the Neighborhood Relations Division of the city applied for an AmeriCorps team. And first of all, I recognize that division of the city, particularly Monique Gaudet, Sasha Hahn. It isn't always easy to get these groups. There's a great deal of competition, and we have applied several times, but this is the first one we've had in the city. So we're really very proud. And in a way, this is similar to Peace Corps. Most of us are more used to that because it started back quite a while ago. Now, a newer program is the AmeriCorps that is domestic, many times in the cities, and doing just great things, particularly they'll be working in many of our intensive care, needed neighborhoods, doing many different projects. With me here is Jared Lanier, the team leader, and why don't you tell us some projects you're doing?
Yeah, so we've been going around to DIAs this past weekend. We helped the Topeka Fire Department install fire alarms in various neighborhoods and also giving them safety information and protocols for the fire season and the tornado season that's coming up. And today, we actually started working on the Clutter to the Curb project, where we go around and helping homes get rid of the clutter that may have accumulated in their homes and yards.
Thank you. So you're here now through into July, is that correct? And I'm going to stand over here, so when they walk by, they'll say their name and where they are from, hometown, state, whatever. Okay.
I'm Nick Barnstead. I'm from Fredericksburg, Virginia.
Hi, Rhiana Newville, I'm from Eugene, Oregon.
Ashley Lobez, from Norwalk, California.
Hi, my name is CJ Cronforst, and I'm from Nina, Wisconsin.
Hi, Alyssa Traypon, I'm from Lakel, Minnesota.
I'm Nicole Patton, I'm from Downers Grove, Illinois.
I'm Bialzek Griffin-Alishkovic, and I'm from Tacoma Park, Maryland.
I'm Austin Sylvia, I'm from Bristol, Rhode Island.
Jared Lanier, from Springville, Alabama.
Now, we have another special event here we're going to do this evening. Joining me up here is Fire Chief Martin, and we are actually recognizing Fire Chief Wayne. Thank you. I heard I was saying that incorrectly. This is very special, a young man we want to recognize because he did something very important, matter of fact, easy to do, but so important to his family. On the morning of April 4, at about 6:20 a.m., John Ray Munos Fry woke to find smoke in his room. He looked to find there was no fire around, but his room was filling with smoke. Now, in his family, they do something called Adult of the Day, right? And each of the members of the family take turns, being the adult, they get up earlier, make sure everyone else is up, getting ready for school and work, right? And that was, this was your week. So he was getting up early. He found that the smoke was pretty intense. He looked out, there was fire in another part of the house. So he got everybody out very early, very quickly, and performed a very important task in waking his family and getting them to safety. And because of those quick actions, then, they could safely evacuate the house, and there was a fire, and it was a serious fire, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. The fire started on the exterior outside of John Ray's window with slight extension into the home, so it's a quick recognition of the seriousness of what took place, and the learn of his family should be really commended.
Thank you. So we have a certificate of recognition. City of Topeka honors John Ray Munos Fry with the Life Safety Award for his prompt response in sensing danger, taking immediate action to alert family and firefighters, resulting in his family safely evacuating their home. So, behalf of the city, thank you for what you did. And you have a presentation. Quick thinking in a critical situation.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it runs in the family. These are my cousins. We love fire. Don't we love fire, Legenda?
Now, we also have some presentations this evening, Mr. City Manager, if you'd want to introduce the first presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to ask if you'd be able to come forward and just introduce this item to the 2016.
Good evening, governing body. If you recall, as part of the 2016 budget process, you all added $30,000 to be used for arts throughout the community. You saw a presentation around January where Sarah Frazelle of Arts Connect came and presented their plan for how they would advertise and go about getting applicants for the grants. And we really wanted to kind of close the loop and have her come back and present to you where the actual grants were allocated out to, so she'll have a short presentation for you here in a minute.
Hi, everybody. I came mostly tonight to say thank you. I know that you all have a really busy agenda and a lot of things to do, but I'm not sure I know how to advance these slides. Should I just do the right-left? Okay, okay. Great. But I come tonight on behalf of the thousands of Topecas who will be impacted by these arts grants, and we just wanted to come here and, when we don't have our handout, and to express our appreciation for that. There are a lot of people who've joined us in the chamber who have come to show their support as well. So if you're involved with a grantee organization or just a lover of the arts in our community, could you stand up?
Very good. Wow.
So thank you to them for being here, and I think it shows the diversity of these programs and of the importance of this in our community. Thank you. We received an overwhelming response to the grant program. We had to make some tough decisions because of that. We tried to focus on programs that served populations that had limited to no access to the arts already and that also leveraged existing resources in creative ways. The 48 applicants represented $1.3 million in total project budgets, and there were $110,000 in grant requests. The Grants Committee, which was made up by a board members of Arts Connect, as well as some community members, decided, we got together and met and decided who would receive funding of those. And we would estimate that 18,000 individuals will be impacted directly by the arts access grants, and that the public art projects obviously will impact everyone because we all see those visitors to our city and the rest. A total of $36,000 was spent on these grants. $30,000 came from the city, and then we raised an additional $6,100 to put into, in additional funds. This is a lot to read out loud, so I won't, but this is a look at the 15 organizations who did receive funding. They're exciting, this is half of them. They're exciting, diverse, impactful, and they include everybody. There are new organizations, there are old organizations, schools, artists, teachers, parents, churches, although we didn't do any religious-based programs because of it being municipal funding. And there's the second, the rest of the group. They're devoting a lot of their time and energy to make our community better, and I think these are meaningful, important, and impactful ways that will affect our community for years to come. Again, we thank you. I know that you all have a lot of things that you could choose to spend your money on, and I am on behalf of the city of Topeka, the people of Topeka, I guess you could say, not the city of Topeka, that we thank you. And these funds will plant many seeds that will grow trees that bear fruit for many years to come, and we're really excited about it, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, for your presentation.
Sure thing.
We have a second presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Alan Moore to come forward. He's going to provide an update to this body on the Sustainability Advisory Board.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. I'm here presenting on behalf of the City of Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board. We were established in 2008 by the city council. Currently, we have nine members that have a pretty varied level of expertise and experience in different areas. We did recently get an update from the Assistant City Manager's Office on some of the energy efficiency and sustainability efforts that have gone on recently in the city. There's some good stuff on there. So then I'm just going to take you through, I think everybody should have got a copy of our report. So I'm just going to start with, I'm not going to read it verbatim in detail, but just cover some of the highlights. So in the last year, this is the summary, "The last year, the city has achieved two milestones towards expanding sustainability of the city. The continued expansion of the bikeways program and the adoption of the 2040 land use management plan, those are both key, significant things that as a sustainability advisory committee, we are very supportive of. The fact remains that with this progress, though, the city of Topeka is going to be challenged to meet the 2020 goals that were set by the city council for sustainability." So without some action on the city's, the likelihood of meeting those goals is going to continue to become increasingly difficult. So our advisory board has the following recommendations. Really, first and foremost, in our mind, is reinstate a paid, full-time position for a sustainability coordinator reporting to the city manager. So that position's been empties or vacant since 2013. That's a key spot in leading sustainability efforts. It takes a lot of effort and focus to go work against this. The key role of that person is lead and measure the city's progress towards the existing 2020 goals, as were outlined in the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Plan. So that was adopted by the city council in September of 2012. The last update against those goals was actually January of 2013. So just a couple of items that are on that. The overall goal was a 10% reduction in energy use in the city. That breaks down by department to 10% reduction in energy use in municipal buildings, 10% reduction in use of energy in the fleet, 50% reduction in landfill waste, and then adopting current building codes. So the key with not having someone responsible for that, in our mind, is how do you track and measure against those goals? How do we know how we're doing as a city? The second recommendation, which really just goes towards that, is make sustainability an integral part of the city decision-making by this council and by the city departments, looking at projects that are going, what can be done on those to support sustainability? It includes everything from how you handle the project design, if there is a project that involves renovation and demolition, how you handle those materials. There's a whole vast portfolio of things that a lot of us in industry do, that we go look at that. So that's a key item. Really gets to item number three, refocus efforts to improve energy efficiency in the city facilities. This is looking at cost-effective lighting, energy management systems. Again, there's technology out there. As you go look at lighting fixtures, et cetera, there's a lot of stuff out there that you can go update and really drive some fairly easy returns as you go look at those. Item four is adoption of the energy efficiency elements of the current edition of the International Building Codes. Tough to keep up with, these get updated a lot, but it is a barrier to folks moving forward with that. Health and environmental objectives, so completion of projects to eliminate the combined sewer overflow, infrastructure, monthly public release of the water quality tests. And then really overall, item six is broaden the focus on quality of life efforts within the city. Reforestation, support for the community gardens, support for inclusion of a diverse and native planning program, continuation of complete streets and bikeways, and support for any community projects that happen to include sustainability concepts. So really, a lot of it goes back to how do you lead this effort and how important is the sustainability effort for the city?
Okay. Would you introduce yourself and what you do, your daytime job?
My other job? So I'm Alan Moore. I've been a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board for about two years. And my other job, I'm the Director of Engineering and Maintenance at the Freedom Aid Facility south of Topeka.
And it happens to be a lead?
Yeah, we are a lead, gold-certified facility, the second existing facility in the U.S.
So that's great. Congratulations. And it gives you, it gives you some reason to have some feelings, some thoughts, why everyone, and the city included, should be involved in a program like this.
Our facility, as well as a lot of our other business partners in Topeka, are very proactive in a lot of the stuff we do, and actually can lend a lot of support to the city efforts.
Well, thank you for taking the time to be here and to present on behalf of the committee and council. The council created this Sustainability Advisory Board, and their role is to recommend to the city things that we should be doing. So that's their fulfilling their role, and this is their annual report to us that we can look at and be aware of. Other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. We'll then proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wogast.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Shum.
Here.
De La Isla.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
Deputy Mayor De La Isla is out of town for several days and could not be here this evening. Council members, we have no additions or deletions to the agenda. There will be one executive session, and you were handed some material, sort of updates on a couple of the resolutions that we'll be considering tonight, that we'll comment on at that time. So we will proceed then with the consent agenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Mike Wilson to the Board of Building and Fire Appeals for a term ending June 1, 2018. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Jeff Roman to the Board of Plumbing Examiners for a term ending June 1, 2018. C is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Neil Carlson to the Board of Plumbing Examiners for a term ending June 1, 2018. D is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as Eagle Cruise Night to be held on May 14, 2016. E is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting cumulus broadcasting exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-170 concerning noise prohibitions. F, our minutes of the regular meeting of April 12, 2016. And there is a list of applications before you. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. Your pleasure, Councilwoman Jensen.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved as read. Proceed to the action items, first is an ordinance on GO bonds.
A is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson authorizing the issuance of $20,850,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation bond, Series 2016A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, under the authority of KSA 10101 to 125-inclusive, KSA 126801 at Seek, and Charter Ordinance Number 89 of the city, all as amended.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Kaufman to step forward. He can provide information on this activity. I also want to recognize that Mr. Jeff White from Columbia Capital, the city's financial consultant advisor, and then also Phil Wolfe, city bond counsel from Nichols and Wolfe, is also in the audience today.
All right. And council members, we did get updated copies before you with the updated amounts that you will learn from the presentation. Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So we've got some great news to share with you tonight. And I'm going to talk in general about the three items before you. So one, you have an ordinance authorizing the issuance of GO bonds of $20,850,000. There's a resolution for those GO bonds, which prescribes the terms and agreements with the buyers. And then there's also an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance of full faith and credit tax increment finance bonds in the amount of $4,430,000. So with the assistance of Columbia Capital and our bond counsel, Phil Wolfe, today, we conducted a competitive sell and went out to the market for bonds. Those bids were received early this morning. I'd say they're highly competitive bids, and we're very happy with those results. The information and put in the packets was preliminary, and then you should have updated item before you based on the sell today. That would give you updated numbers. Important thing to highlight, these refunded bonds, we saved approximately $2.5 million today, and that's going to be basically saved over the next 15 years. today, and that's going to be basically saved over the next 15 years for the city. In addition to that, Standard and Poor's, once again reaffirmed AA rating with a positive outlook for the city. Important things to highlight, we, we received the top ratings in management and budget flexibility. So we overall received a very strong rating, once again, from Standard and Poor's. One thing that they're really watching, and that's what that positive outlook is indicating, is they're looking for some improvement on the economic indicators for the City of Topeka. You should have a summary sheet in front of you, which was, yeah, two pages, front and back. And it would look like this. Okay? So I'm going to talk first about the 2016A GO bonds. So those GO bonds was part new money, so there were four projects associated with that new money, and that was about $985,000 worth of new money. And then the other part of that, 2016A, was refinancing, and that was refinancing of the 2011A bonds. And those amounted to approximately $2.1 million in savings that'll be recognized over the next 15 years. We received five bids today, which is very good, considering two years ago, we only received about two bids on our bonds. So we continue to see more bids, which is a great thing. The winning bid was 2.0163%, and that was with Fifth Third Securities, as you can see here on the sheet on the left corner. The policy from the governing body is a 3% savings. We had an 8.87, so very high savings amount. And those savings are evenly structured over the remaining life of the bonds. So if you look on that, the second page, on the column over here, you can see the 2011A bonds, and then the refunding structure, and then the savings over the life. The second bond is the full faith and credit TIF bonds, which were bonds for the College Hill TIF area in the City of Topeka. We received four bids on those bonds. The winning bid was 1.5716%. And you can see those bids right here. The winning bid for that was Commerce Bank. Once again, the refunding policy, 3%, we achieved a 6.8% savings today. There's a $325,000 worth of savings over the next 10 years of the bonds, and those savings are also evenly structured over the remaining life of the bonds. And you can see those results on the budgetary savings on the bottom left of the second page. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Are there, are there questions? Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is College Hill the only, is that the only TIF bond that we have out?
Councilman Ortiz, yes, that's the only TIF bond that we have, and the only TIF district remaining in the City of Topeka.
Because we got rid of, you're going to call it Eastgate, but I don't call it Eastgate. But, right?
Whatever it is.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, councilmembers, you know, there's always, on the, the agenda item has an amount of what they, what it was assumed it would be, but the, the amount is usually different after the, after we have the sale. And that's actually so on this, item 5A is the correct amount. So if there, if there's a motion to approve, we would approve according to the 5A, or we make the correct amount in that. Are there other questions about, well, okay, we're looking at item A, an ordinance for GO bonds. That's the first one we must take action on. Councilman Shum?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Councilwoman Claire seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the GO bonds are approved. We go to item B, a resolution, which tackles the same thing, the clerk would read.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson prescribing the form and details of general obligation bond series 2016A of the City of Topeka, Kansas, in the aggregate principal amount of $20,850,000, the issuance of which was, were authorized by the City of Topeka to its, to its ordinance, adopted and approved April 19, 2016, and authorizing certain other documents in action in connection with the issuance of the bonds.
Okay, this is the resolution that actually handles this. Are there any questions for Mr. Kaufman on it? Councilman Jensen?
I would move to approve.
Moved to approve. Councilman Cohen seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the GO bond resolution is approved. Go to item 5C on the TIF bond.
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson authorizing the issuance of full faith and credit tax increment refunding bond series 2016 College Hill redevelopment in the maximum principal amount of $4,430,000 of the City of Topeka, Kansas, for the purpose of currently refunding certain outstanding full faith and credit tax increment refunding bonds and making certain covenants with respect thereto.
Are there questions to Mr. Kaufman on this item? Mr. Jensen?
Moved to approve.
Been moved to approve. Councilwoman Claire seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I'm sorry, yes, Councilman Ortiz?
Brandon, can you explain what this does, please?
Councilman Ortiz, do you mean the full faith and credit? Okay, so these are full faith and credit tax increment bond, so for the College Hill area, well, first, full faith and credit means they're backed by the taxing authority of the City of Topeka. So for the College Hill area, I can't remember what, I think back in 2006, the city issued about 5.8 million in bonds for the College Hill TIF area, and that was to do public infrastructure improvements for that TIF with streets, sidewalks, and other things associated with that project. So these, these bonds, or those bonds went to pay for those public improvements. So full faith and credit just means it's the, it's backed by the, by the full faith and credit of the city and its taxing authority.
So how much longer before this is paid off? I guess we have.
Councilmember Ortiz, those bonds are going to be paid off. If you can see on the second page, they'll be retired in 2025, so.
Thank you.
And what we do is by refinancing, we're going at a greatly improved interest rate, reduced interest rate, so we save money on it, on our payments.
And for, for that district, we get an increment because of the improved values in that district that help to go pay off a portion of these bonds.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor and with a discussion. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance on the TIF bonds is approved. We go to the next three, some real estate purchase agreements.
D is approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Topeka and Seth E. and Carol, Carol R. Gallmeyer for the purchase of property and all related costs located at 4101 Southwest Woodbury Court South, in the amount of $163,375.78 for project number T-151033, and specifically authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Gerber to explain this and answer any questions.
Okay.
Governing body, thank you, good evening. Very briefly, we had a nice discussion about this project last week. As you will recall, this is a project that has been on the CIP, or a city project for a number of years now, four or five years. It was originally adopted with an almost $900,000 budget. Through the course of discussions with staff and with the property owners in the area, it was determined, a couple of things were determined. First off, the money for a complete engineering solution was not there in the $900,000, and that anything that was going to be done within that $900,000 was not going to be acceptable to any of the parties concerned, including the city. So with that, really late last fall, staff went back to the drawing board and started talking about the option of potentially buying out those houses. And I think in this case, particular credit needs to be given to our stormwater staff, WPC staff, Bob Samples, Sylvia Davis, Jennifer Harrell, and Stephen Miller, came up with this solution, and the idea was to go ahead and buy out these properties. At this point, we've made offers, and those offers have been accepted by all three property owners. And now, if the council adopts the next three action items, then the council will have approved those as well. Long-term, the intent will be to demolish those houses and to reestablish the channel in its original form, so that it contains the water more appropriately. With that, I can stand for questions. Mr. Peak's also available for questions, and there's also WPC staff.
Okay. Are there questions about the whole project? We're really talking about all three. Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just curious why the mayor executes the agreements and not the city manager in this case. Not that I care who does it, I just.
I think city attorney, would you answer that question?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I think it is state statute.
For a real estate agreement?
For real estate. It's for some reason.
Simple enough, just was curious.
It's the mayor.
I'll, I'll answer if you like, that's.
All right. Would you, do you agree?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. White. Just curious, thank you.
Councilman Claire?
How was the purchase price agreed upon?
Mr. Gerber?
Mr. Mayor, councilwoman, staff went and negotiated with each property owner and reached what everybody felt was a fair value for the property, both from our perspective and from their perspective. So obviously, you take what the property is worth from the appraiser, you take what they think it's worth for their hassle and time, and, and you come to a conclusion.
And in some cases, there are included some moving costs associated with this, that is included in this amount, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. If you notice, on the, on the next two agenda items, there are some additional costs included. I believe the last one does not include those costs.
Any other questions or comments? It was your pleasure on item 5D.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Councilman Harmon seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, it is approved. And also on, on that one is where the amount is different, the clerk read a different amount, is that correct?
It's the correct amount.
There was, the once, $160,350, the amount was updated, and so she read the correct amount is like 3,000 more than what, what this was. Item E.
E is approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Topeka and Robert C. and Deborah L. Taylor for the purchase of property and other related costs located at 4109 Southwest Woodbury Court South, in the amount of $181,397.63 for project number T-151003, and specifically authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Are there questions about this particular item? Councilman Jensen?
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Councilman Harmon seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the real estate purchase agreement is approved. Go to item F.
F is approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Topeka and the Laura M. Andrews Revital Trust for the purchase of property located at 4100 Southwest Woodbury Court South, in the amount of $145,000 for project number T-151003, and specifically authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Councilman Hiller?
Move to approve.
Councilman Jensen seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
Ms. Ortiz? We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the purchase agreement is approved. Go to item G, transit guest tax agreement.
G is approval of the transit guest tax development agreement submitted by the Evel Knievel Museum.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that was brought forward as a discussion item last week with Mr. Patterson from Historic Harley-Davidson and the Evel Knievel Museum here to answer questions this evening. Bruce Zimmerman, who is the president of Historic Harley-Davidson, and also will be the director of the museum, is here to answer any questions that this body might have. At this point, I would actually ask Ms. Robertson to just remind people as to what we're doing here, and be available to answer any questions that this body may have.
Okay. Ms. Robertson?
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, in October of 2015, you all passed a resolution approving certain projects for TGT allocations. This project is the first that has come before you for a redevelopment agreement. In November, we submitted a first draft. We worked very well back and forth with the folks at Harley-Davidson. I think we've come to some very good language here, and we've discussed it last week. If you have any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Were there any follow-up questions from our discussion that we had last week? Councilwoman Schwartz?
I'll move to approve.
Councilwoman Schwartz moves to approve. Councilwoman Claire seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the transit guest tax agreement is approved. Mr. Zimmerman, would you stand? You didn't get, no one had questions, but we want to acknowledge, acknowledge your time. Glad you could be here and join us. Thank you.
We just thank the city very much for all the support they've given us, and look very much forward to having our museum operating and bringing great value to our community that's already a fantastic place to live.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We move on to item H, ordinance on expenditures.
H is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Jim Colson allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of February 27 through April 1, 2016, and enumerating city expenditures therein.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval to authorize city expenditures in the amount of $16,899,864.80. We seek a motion for approval.
Mr. Jensen?
So moved.
It is moved. Councilwoman Claire seconds, any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the ordinance on expenditures is approved. We go to item I, capital improvement plan and budget.
I is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson authorizing and adopting the 2017-2021 capital improvement plan, and the 2017-2019 capital improvement budget, and approving the project budgets attached.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to have Mr. Gerber walk through this item and answer any questions that this body may have. Mr. Gerber?
Governing body, thank you, good evening again. As you know, we've been having discussions for the past month and a half about our annual CIP process. I'm going to speak sort of generically about both of these items, and maybe I'll make some brief comments about the next item when we get to it. But what you have before you are resolutions which adopt the CIP book, which everyone has, has been emailed and had given to them. It adopts this book by reference. So if you, if you vote affirmatively on 5I tonight, you will be adopting this book and all projects contained therein by reference. Additionally, on 5J specifically, if you adopt those resolutions, it will allow the city to give our notice of intent to potentially issue revenue bonds for the projects associated with the CIP. What 5I also does is gives notice of intent for the issuance of general obligation bonds. Before we ask for action on this item, I wanted to walk through a couple documents that we passed out prior to the meeting tonight. As you know, the CIP and the interlocal are related in the sense that contained within our capital improvement plan are, yes ma'am, contained within our capital improvement plan are the countywide Hafnsen sales tax projects. So the first sheet we passed out, which looks like this, details the difference between the CIP book that we've been discussing, and the potential changes if the interlocal agreement is adopted, which the council has also been discussing. And so just to, just to run through the, those, so you have an understanding of where those changes have occurred. We've been talking about those, but I think it's, it's a good refresher for everyone. The Southwest Six Gauged Fairlon Project is exactly the same in both the interlocal and the. the current edition of the CIP book. The Zoo Master Plan is slightly different in that there's still funding in 18 and 19, but some of the funding is pushed out in out-years in the interlocal agreement. The Bike Way Master Plan has the same years, but different amounts, slightly different amount. You can see there that it's $100,000 difference between what's in the current CIP and what's in the interlocal. The 12th Street project is in the same years, but it actually has increased amounts, which more accurately reflect what the project should amount to. The California 37th to 45th project, which you might recall, we had someone come to speak on in public comment three weeks ago or so, ago or so, and Mr. Peak and I also met with that gentleman since that time. That project is moved up and the amounts are increased, again, to reflect the accuracy of the project. And then finally, there's an addition in this ILA of the Southwest 17th project, McVicker to I-470. That was not in the current CIP that you've seen, but it is in the interlocal. So maybe I'll pause and see if there's any questions about those changes.
Other questions? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gerber, you talked about the California project, that it was moved up and the amounts were increased. Can you tell me why? I mean, don't get me wrong, I agree, but I just...
You're opposed.
No. I totally agree, it should have been done a long time ago, but I just, you know, I know I'll probably get that question.
Councilwoman Ortiz, really, the simple fact is exactly what you're saying, it's long overdue. As you know, there's two other phases to this project upcoming, 29th to 33rd, 33rd to 37th, and then this is the final phase of that project. It makes sense to make those somewhat congruent so that they follow each other year after year, and so for all those reasons, it made sense to us to move it up.
Do we need to increase because of the cost? Because we waited so long? You know, sometimes we do that. We get a price, and then when we start on the project, it increases.
Councilwomen, certainly since the council last discussed that project 10 years or so ago, the costs have gone up. I don't know that that is necessarily indicative of this change. We just wanted to make sure we got an accurate number in there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilman Chum.
Thank you very much. Doug, I appreciate what you and our Director of Public Works have done in this, because Sylvia, I'm sure remembers, this was originally scheduled under Wolfle, several councilmen before me. And even before that, it was fought for. So to do the project in stages and not leave California hanging for a decade after we get the first two parts done, I can't thank you enough. That's the right decision, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Councilman Jensen.
Moved to approve.
Are we ready for that motion?
There's probably a couple other things I would walk through, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
A couple more, give Mr. Gerber his time here.
Sure thing. I would also say that a lot of staff does a lot of work on this, but certainly Nikki Lee deserves credit for putting this comparison together, which I think is very helpful and helps us see the differences. Just again, so we're all clear, the next item in your packet is what we're calling pages seven through nine, which is just the project list of the CIP and CIB projects for the upcoming year. Again, it is updated to assume an adoption of the interlocal agreement. The timing is a little bit off, but if you adopt this, we're assuming that the interlocal will be adopted as well, so those two were partially hand in glove. And then finally, the last item that we handed out tonight is an updated resolution. The only change in that resolution is on page three, line 64, it just simply adds another page to the CIP book to include the addition of the 17th Street project.
All right, good. Councilman Jensen.
Let's do it.
Okay. He, I believe he's moving approval of the capital improvement plan, capital improvement budget. That's item on the agenda. Councilman Chum, seconds, any discussion? Councilman Cleare, Councilman Cleare.
On page nine...
Of the...
I have no idea.
Of the ordinance? Or this? Okay, of the summary, the handout.
The summary. There's fire station renovations. Do you know which station that is?
Councilwoman Cleare, those are... I'll look at Chief Wayne. I don't know if those have been determined yet. We're actually talking about, we have monies in 2016 to do renovations as needed to various projects, whether they're window issues, roof issues, any types of remodel issues.
So there's nothing earmarked right now for that?
If Chief Wayne has a better story.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Cleare, I'm going to ask Chief Wayne to come forward, and I'm going to put him on the spot a little bit. We actually had a meeting this morning. We talked about the CIP for the renovation repairs. He's been working very closely with staff to identify some specific needs. So we have a... I know that there's more work that's going to be done in terms of specifying the projects, but he can give a bit of an overview on it.
And the breathing apparatus.
We're moving forward on some critical items that we need to address in some of the stations. We're working diligently with Public Works and facilities to address some of those issues in Station 3, Station 7, 11, and 10. I'm not sure what else I can offer on that front.
Are there some examples of the type of work?
Station 11, that was a complete remodel of the kitchen area. That's been on the books for a while and well in need for many years. Station 10, we're moving forward with some of the areas that have caused concern for us, in the basement area specifically. We've got a plan addressed to mitigate that and improve that situation. Good news on Station 7, where we had some overflow issues. That's been resolved here as of late, so we're chipping away at it aggressively as we can to make those improvements.
Yes, go ahead, another question?
And then what's the self-contained breathing apparatus?
Those are our self-contained breathing apparatus we wear on our backs for going entering into a fire.
Do you like need new ones?
It's respiratory protection, yeah. So the standard for, NFPA standard for air packs have kind of outgrown our current packs, so they don't meet the industry standards at this point. Typically, the lifespan for air packs is approximately 10 to 12 years, and they're well into that tenure.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
On Fire Station 3, what is, what do we need there? Do you know?
Well, as you know, Fire Station 3 is not a young facility.
No, it's not. That's why I'm asking, because are you talking about the maintenance building, the building itself?
No, the actual fire station. You've been in there recently. I'm sure that that station needs a little bit of attention in the form of a new kitchen and some overall maintenance and upgrade into Station 11 quarters.
Absolutely. You're all right, I like you. Let me ask you this. I know at one time, we went in and put in the windows at the admin building there. Has that all been completed then? It should be, and I'm just curious. Do you know, and that's something you can get back with me on, but...
Yes, I'm assuming that they have been addressed, because they all look pretty new to me, and there don't seem to be any issues that have arisen recently since I've been here.
Okay. So Fire Station 3 would get a complete renovation, are you saying?
Well, I would wish it would be a complete renovation, because there's so many areas of need that we need to address. We're going to do this and chip away at it as an overall project, but for sure, the kitchen at 3 needs to have a remodel.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Yes, Councilman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank the staff. I appreciate that you brought forth...
I think we'll thank you for your response.
I appreciate that you brought forth the change sheet. We had a lot of back and forth. We've really improved the documents as well as the reports we get. There's still some slippage, that's why I had as many questions as I did, because I couldn't connect with what had been approved in prior years to what we were seeing. I know they've worked on that and are going to work on it further, so I'm eager to see those improvements coming. The substitute sheet, though, makes me more comfortable in voting on this, because I knew we were looking at something different, so thank you.
And I think also, we're going to get updates. You're developing a system where we will have frequent updates on the projects, and I think that's been a question in the past, and it's being addressed, and I think that's very helpful. Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second to approve, and this is approving the capital improvement plan, the capital improvement budget, and the project budgets that are identified in the capital improvement budget. Mayor. Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Doug, I just had a quick question. Is 17th Street in the citywide half-cent sales tax for Street under, on page nine, under maintaining and improving existing streets 2017, 18, and 19?
Councilman, if I understand your question, are you referring to the project I referenced, 17th Street, McVicker to the 470?
Yes.
So that's a countywide half-cent project? You should see that at the very bottom of page nine. In fact, it's the last line in red.
So that's the only money we've got set aside for 17th? I thought we had money for 17th Street someplace else. Maybe that's just wishful thinking on my part.
Councilman, I'm looking through the book right now, and I don't see it identified I believe that's, I believe that's the only 17th Street project in this...
Well, how much? I mean, it's 800,000, right? Well, it will be...
So, Councilman, that'll be year one of the project. So that'll be sort of the acquisition, right-of-way engineering piece of the project. Then next year, when we bring in the CIP and it expands to 2022, you'll see a larger amount for that project to include construction.
So this 800,000 is just the first year of it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. That's always good, get those in, get that information. Anything else? We have a question, or a motion and a second before us? No other discussion? This is on the approving the capital improvement plan and budget. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the capital improvement plan budget is approved. We go to item J, revenue bonds, which were related and spoken to, but we'll read and proceed.
J is a resolution introduced by City Manager Jim Colson declaring the necessity to repair, alter, reconstruct, enlarge, or improve the city's water, water pollution, and/or stormwater utility system through improvement projects authorized by resolution and providing notice of intention authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds in the manner required by KSA 101201 at C.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Mr. Gerber to address this item also.
Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The clerk explained it quite well, but very technically, in sort of layman's terms, what this, adoption of this resolution will do, will provide notice of our intent to issue revenue bonds for the projects contained within the CIP. We will typically do those revenue bond issuances later in the fall. I think maybe we're talking about an August timeframe this year, but that's yet to be determined. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Okay. Now, again, the difference is, we did the CIP, and those are GO bonds. Now we do the utilities, and they're revenue bonds. And so that's the difference between the two. And you notice it has a different voting requirement. Revenue bonds require two-thirds vote of the body. Any discussion on this? Councilman Chum.
Deputy City Manager, are we looking at any effect on rates if we issue these bonds as to our customers?
Councilman Chum, Mr. Mayor, the projects that we would potentially be issuing revenue bonds on assume our current rate structure. So certainly, we want to have those discussions moving forward, but it assumes that we have what's in place right now.
For 2017.
For 2017.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Your pleasure. Councilman Jensen.
Moved to approve.
Been moved to approve. Councilwoman Cleare, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine, we have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the resolution on the revenue bonds is approved. Go to item K, interlocal agreement.
K is approval of an interlocal agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Shawnee County, Kansas, and the City of Topeka, Kansas, relating to financing countywide infrastructure development, quality of life projects, and economic development to be funded by a one-half of one cent countywide retailer's sales tax.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to recognize the tremendous amount of work that this body and several other people have put into this and are certainly conversations that have continued with the county to do, to reach an agreement that is extremely important to this community and to provide a foundation going forward. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Ms. Robertson to just provide an overview of where we stand on this document, and we will be seeking a motion to approve this document.
Okay, yes. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been working through this issue for quite some time now. We had gotten it down to about a half dozen substantive issues, worked through those, and I think it came down to a matter of the membership on the JADO board. There were lots of different options that were discussed. Ultimately, I believe that the current language that exists in the interlocal as written now is what we've incorporated into the proposed interlocal agreement for your consideration this evening. Most of the other issues have been discussed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Other questions for Ms. Robertson? Councilman Cohen.
Can we get a summary on which version that we ended up settling on?
We base, Councilmember Cohen, we base the model that we used with the February 2nd document that we initially sent over to the county. So that's the base document that we used. After that, we had variations depending on what issue was discussed, and there were a lot of, you know, back and forth. This version is the same, but for the fact that the membership that's incorporated in here reflects the current language as it exists in the ILA. Pretty much everything else is the same.
Other questions? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jensen keeps pointing at me. Can you correct that? He's pointing at me.
I'll have a swift talking with him later.
Thank you.
We'll see him afterwards.
Every time.
I'm always in trouble for something, aren't I?
I was just wondering, does this agreement, it has the money that's split, is that correct?
Correct. It's Councilmember Ortiz, it's a 52-48% split on the money that is not geared towards economic development.
Okay.
For project-driven.
I think my concern is, it's my understanding that the money was together to finish projects, so if the money's split, and I don't know if anybody here can answer that, will we be able to finish projects if it's split like that? My concern is, the voters, they didn't know we were going to split the money like that, so when they went to the voting booth, they, in good faith, figured we would be on one accord. So in the past, we've finished projects. What will happen if the money's split like that and we have a project we can't finish?
But if I could speak to that, too, and I agree, the voters approved a list of projects, and then are the two Public Works, the departments...
And then are the two public works, the departments, determined the cost of all of those and within the money that's available. And that came out with a 52-48 split. The city is receiving 48, the county 52. But that 48% enables us to complete all of our projects that were on the ballot. So it's, and again, it's always, we're talking 15 years. There's no way to predict 15 years out what could happen. But if everything, if our, all the estimates and projections would be as we assume they will be, we would be able to finish all the projects.
But, Mr. Mayor, when we went to vote on it, we never said we'd split our money like that. We just said we'd finish all projects. So what if the county gets in a situation that they can't finish their project? I think that's a concern to me because, you know, realistically, that's why they went to the voting booth. It's just a concern. Did you want to say something, Mr. or City Manager?
Mr. City Manager, would you? I was trying to get him to stop. Well, I think that's a good point, but I think to understand the mechanics behind the way the original deal was structured, I didn't even talk about the previous, is there was a specific budget, there was a specific schedule, and identified what the cost of those projects were. And under the original discussion that we had, the city was receiving 46%, and now we're receiving 58. I think the...
Forty-eight.
Did I? I'm sorry, 48. Did I say 58? No problem. And, no, so I think that we're confident, but the language also allows it if there is a shortage of income, of revenue that generates to the bodies, it is prorated, is shared in terms of that reduction. We've looked very closely. The confidence level is that there is enough money to do all the projects that we had identified.
And actually, with that, I believe each, the city and county each have about a million left at the end of the 15 years, which you can think of as a contingency fund. So if we run short, they have that, and they have that to work with. And also, if there are any unspent funds, it goes back into a pool so that the city and county together would have those funds available. Now, Councilman Ortiz.
So, City Manager, when you say "we," are you talking "we" as in city and county? Are you just talking "we" as in city?
In this particular case, I'm talking "we," which would make up city and county people talking and hashing out the details.
I just think we should be real careful. The voters have expressed their concerns, and they voted in a certain way, and I just don't want us to get in trouble with that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Schum.
Thank you very much. When we were looking at these numbers in January, most of the factoring we did on the interlocal was based on a shared budget of about $260 million. One of the concerns I have is we're now projecting out, to make all the numbers work, a budget of $278 million coming in. It's an $18 million difference. And to Ms. Ortiz's point, Councilman Ortiz's point, when we're adding in $18 million to the overall to make it work, based on an original projection of 260, I certainly understand why you're concerned about the money not being there if we go closer to what the original projections were. And I think that may have been a concern of yours. Thank you.
Well, I would like to have our Chief Fiscal Officer, Brendan Kaufman, speak about the difference of the two estimates from the city and the county.
Okay. Mayor and members of the council, so the original estimates that the city put out was approximately $262 million. So not too long ago, I went over and met with the financial administrator over at the county, Ms. Griner, and we came together and worked out what we believed would be a good projection, which brought that number to about $270.8 million. So it was a little bit about an $8 million increase there from the projection. So basically, what we did, we looked at the 15 actuals and then got an estimate for 16, and then gave a 1% estimate moving forward for growth, which, on average, over the term, is a good growth for the city of Topeka.
Okay, so that speaks to that difference. Where we started at one point, and then so the city and county's agreeing on what the projected income would be over the period of the 15 years. Does that answer? Yeah. Councilman Schum.
Thank you. And if I could follow up on that briefly. I know as a council, we discussed looking at ways to provide urban economic development, and that is completely cut out of the proposal we're looking at tonight. There's still a large section of Topeka that needs help entering the workforce, recovering from life situations, that we're not addressing, other than to hope, again, and I've been on the record, we're hoping GoToPika addresses that adequately with about 10% of their budget as issued by JADO. I remain concerned that the track record isn't there for that. I was encouraged that the city was taking steps to address that. I'm disappointed that we're no longer taking those steps. And at the same time, I understand that we've added more money to streets. So the interlocal that we look at tonight still has flaws. It's certainly not perfect. And it's something that weighs heavy as I decide how to vote on it. The fact that we managed to add money to the streets, we managed to keep money for the zoo, we managed to keep money for bikeways, but we managed to cut money to help those perhaps most in need of economic development here in Topeka.
And I would like to respond. Section 5, I think the language was incorporated, speaking to your issue. In Section 5, economic development priorities, urban programs, added to it, it describes the purposes for its use, and then it says, "and further," that urban economic development programs related to youth, employment, the rehabilitation of blighted, derelict, underutilized facilities, and infrastructure for purposes of attracting economic development prospects have been considered for inclusion. It isn't mandated that those items be funded, but it is there before, it's a part of the interlocal agreement, so that the JADO board would have that in mind as they make decisions and set the goals for the year.
And just to clarify that, that is carved out of the $5 million that's currently going to GoToPika. Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. I think Councilwoman Schwartz pointed earlier.
Well, I'm not quite sure if we're ready for this yet, but knowing that we do have something before us, and as we start this discussion into depth, and knowing that my county commissioner is in the audience, I would like to move that we adopt the interlocal agreement that we have before us, and then if we need to make any changes to it, we go there instead of having all the discussions first.
And that's always a good point that we have on the table before us. Is there a second? Councilman Cohen, second. All right. Now we have an item before us, and back to discussion. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you, Your Honor. To respond to Councilman Schum's comments, I do agree with you in the urgency of investing in that area. I would remind everyone that GoToPika only does what JADO tells it to do, and that wasn't something that JADO had charged them to do. I think that the tide is shifting in terms of what GoToPika needs to do in this community, and I would encourage my fellow councilpeople that are voting members of JADO to make sure that GoToPika has good direction there, because in the past, they haven't received good direction from JADO. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recognize Elaine Schwartz's county commissioner in the audience, if he'd please...
Well, I thought we would do that at the same time we have public comment, if we have any other discussion.
Well, is he going to wait around, or does...
Well, I would imagine. If he gets up, I'll call him immediately. Is there other discussion?
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, the council, county commission as well. I mean, when we look back, there's been a lot of negotiation on this. I think that, I appreciate and think that the county has improved their position in negotiation, and I think we improved ours as well. I am glad to see that. I am comfortable with the urban economic development language and direction being in there as it is, the options for more than one vendor if we choose, we or future JADOs choose to do that. I have just one remaining thing that bothers me, and you all have heard it before, but I'm still baffled as to why the county insists that the commitments regarding the JADO responsibility for strategic planning and setting performance measures and accountability, why the county feels so strongly that that belongs in the operational rules instead of the interlocal. And I just felt like I needed to say that again. It looks like we're ready to go with it. Mayor, is there, can you advise whether there's anything already moving to get this issue then immediately into an agenda at JADO for us to consider in the council, in the JADO rules?
Well, I think it'd be appropriate to suggest this to the chair. Commissioner Beulah is the chair this year, and if you want to have this item addressed at the next JADO meeting, to look at for inclusion in the operating rules.
Thank you.
As any member of the council would have that authority to do.
Thank you.
If there are no other discussion items right now, let's go to the comment, and certainly, Commissioner Archer. If you wish to address the body, you may. Stand for questions. Your pleasure, and we appreciate you joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council. I urge you to approve this, and I can relate to Councilman Schum's concerns. The fact is, there are so many unmet needs in our community. But if you drove a car or truck to the meeting tonight, you know you need to pass this interlocal agreement. If you don't want the Expo Center to shut down, you have to pass this interlocal agreement. And if you care about public safety and our roads and bridges, you have to pass this interlocal agreement. It is that important. If you want to see jobs and capital come to our community, you have to pass this interlocal agreement. And that's all. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Questions, Mr. Archer.
Okay.
And thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other comments? LaZone Graze.
I think I have a few to go around on this side. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm LaZone Graze, a concerned citizen of Topeka. I was going off the premise of the last, what was published in the newspaper, that I think the county commission, when they sent over their suggestion of the interlocal agreement, that there was additional $5 million that would go to the zoo. Is that still?
No.
Okay.
No.
So I agree with Councilman Schum on the, those parts of the community that have, as it was written through Mr. Colson on that urban economic development, that had not truly benefited over the years from the economic development programs. If there were any additional dollars, I do not understand how $75 million could be committed and dedicated and not any of it be targeted to those in most need in the community, which is why I have consistently bought data and statistics on poverty to this body here. And we're looking at a decade worth of high poverty in specific areas. Part of the state child and family well-being report produced by Kansas State showed how out of 105 counties, Shawnee County was ranked very high in all poverty levels that dealt with parental unemployment, need for tanniff, need for childcare, lack of job opportunities. And so, of course, with the HOPE Act, welfare reform passed, that brought other state pressures onto cities. Each city has to deal with it on their own. To commit no money for targeted programming, I am not really, you know, I don't understand the term urban economic development, or urban revitalization, or urban development. I'm very focused on this right here, that we have populations of men, non-custodial parents, who need to get a job, who need to have the training first to get that job. There is nothing in anything that is being funded that's going to address any of that. There are consequences if they do not get a job. There are consequences to the parents, the single parents, who are going to be booted off of cash assistance in 24 months if they do not receive a job. And if their non-custodial parents of these children are not working, they are not receiving cash assistance. I would like you to think about looking a little bit further than tonight, four years, or seven years. These things have consequences. Of course, you did not create the state policies, but you're going to have to respond to them. And many of you in seven, and definitely 12, 14 years, are not going to be here, which is why I believe that it's important to put guarantees or commitments into the interlocal agreement, which if there would have been $5 million available, that that would have been broken over 15 years. That would specifically target workforce training for these target populations as identified in this paper right here. The reason that I am mentioning this is because you have state or local policy that you have to consider. But there are other policies at the state and federal level that will make an impact on... I would like to request some more time.
How much time? I meant one minute. Councilman Ortiz.
Motion to extend three minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend three minutes. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Thank you. I've broken down on these, on what I've passed out, of reasons why I believe that you should commit and not leave it to guesstimation, so that every year, that's what about long-term proper planning is about. If there's $333,000 a year over the next 15 years, as you are creating the type of training program, skilled trade program, there was an article in the paper that was blaring. It said businesses need workers. There is no dispute that the construction industry is losing many people and that there are not enough even young people that are going to be able to get off into the pipeline for this, let alone they're adults, their fathers, adults and things. I sit on the state Kansas Advisory Group on juvenile justice. Anyone who reads the newspaper knows that. That was passed, that was signed by the governor, that's going to shift funds to the community for community-based service to keep young people out of detention centers and jails. Criminal justice for adults is going to be the same thing. There are going to be men who are going to be coming back to this community here because criminal justice is going to let people right back in the community. Where are they supposed to get the training? Lawrence? Whose job is it? Shanoots? I think that it would be foresight into dedicating funds to do something to make sure that as they come back, when they come out, they're not going to be moving over to the west side in West Owana Maker. They're going to be coming probably to the neighborhoods that Mr. Schum talks about. Where are they going to go if they have nowhere to go right now? So I know, and I appreciate, the city manager starting out with $15 million. Councilwoman Hiller, when she was deputy mayor, going to $8.5 million. I thought I read in the paper there where there was going to be $5 million, that the city did, county did a great job, and they were going to say, put $5 million more to the zoo. And I understand that there's a coming, well, maybe GoToPika will do some stuff over time, and maybe they will do a great job. Why not give some monies on there that can really be foreseen and know that it's going to be there, so that if public funds or federal funds needing some type of a match comes up the road, five, seven, 12 years down the road, there's already monies that are dedicated to do these type of things. A guessing game, I just don't think is adequate enough. I hope that you can find, out of $70 million, $75 million, I think $5 million is a very small amount to leverage for a future of opportunity. Or you can just deal with the consequences. My time is up. I would like you to consider that. I know horse buildings, bridges, roads have... I know horse buildings, bridges, roads have, are improvements, capital city improvements, but humans are capital improvements just as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
And one thing, I am not alone. There was actually some people who came here who wanted to. So when you see that I'm coming here by myself, that may be the case, but that doesn't mean that there's other people in the community that does not care about this issue.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your attendance. The next person to speak is Carol Marple.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. And as I've said before, I always wish when I get up here that I was a public speaker. I am not. And I want to thank Councilwoman Ortiz and Councilman Schum. I agree with what you said. Mr. Graze, I agree with what he said. I wanted to make a few comments. You've heard my comments before about the interlocal agreement. Not a lot of them have changed. I don't understand what the hurry is to pass this tonight. Our current agreement does not end until December 31, 2016, when the sales tax ends. We have a JADO meeting scheduled May 11. I think we certainly need a lot more dialogue about the contents of this agreement. I think we need to pay attention to the Gardner Report. For that matter, we need to pay attention to the League of Women Voters Report. And last but not least, you need to pay attention to the public, what we are saying. I want to strongly urge the council to hold firm on the stand that all the council members be voting members of JADO. And Mr. Trummel's not here, and I would like to take a minute, because he said it much better than I could, that we all agree the community and you as the city council and JADO Board represent, representation that this agreement is extremely important to all of us as taxpayers and community residents. You have previously voted to incorporate into this agreement the 100% city council member voting authority on the JADO Board. That was and is the right decision going forward and providing responsible accountability by the city council, JADO participants, and representation for all the city district taxpayers. If you sit on a board like JADO, you are entitled to and should expect and extend the responsibility to vote on all matters coming to and from this business entity. If you are not going to be a voting JADO Board member, then you should restructure the JADO where the non-voting members, i.e. the city council participants, are designated as advisory board members. Therefore, you would remove the confusion and clearly identify what each participant's position is on JADO. Also, to fail and pass and can, also to fail to pass and confirm your earlier decision that all city council members would be voting members of the JADO would be to show a weakness as our city leadership and reinforce the negativism in this community, creating a major downward ripple effect throughout the community. There will be a large part of this community watching this discussion and your related decision. I respectfully request that you affirm your vote and your position as previously given and expressed to the county commission. To do otherwise will be continue allowing the tail to wag the dog. I also want to read the sentence again, because I do think it's extremely important, because without our people, we are nothing. It doesn't matter what our zoo is, doesn't matter what our expo is. Support economic development for socially and economically disadvantaged individuals and/or business enterprises. Could I have, like, two minutes?
Would you? Okay. You have two more minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Councilwoman Ortiz moves to extend for two minutes. Councilwoman Claire seconds. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Thank you very much.
Please continue.
Okay. And economically disadvantaged individuals and/or business enterprises and consider inclusion of urban economic development programs related to youth and employment. We need that. And of all examples that we've just had recently is your own city youth program. You're going to hire 10 youths, my kids would say, don't say kids, youths, for employment. How many did you have? I believe on W-W-W, I heard you had over 100, close to 150. If that doesn't say that we need jobs, our youth need jobs, they want to work. What we have now is not working. Let's put this sales tax money to the best use that it possibly can be. We are going to have to redesign things. And I will quit, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Councilmembers, I would, I would comment that. I also want to commend the council, their participation, their developing plans, options, proposals, as we went through this. And I think there are 10 of us in the governing body, and we all would have written a different interlocal agreement, and we can, and we feel very strongly about it. But we have here something I think is a, we have to compromise, to come together and to have the, the comments that have just been expressed. I know council members reflect those feelings, but we have to come together as a group and agree on something, and we then have to have the agreement of the city. So I think this is an appropriate document to continue the process, to provide it to the county, and where they can then respond to us, if it's in the, in the direction that it can go. And is there other discussion? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to respond to Lazonne and challenge myself and all of us who are elected officials here, whether we're voting or non-voting members of JADO. I strongly support the issues about making sure we're doing appropriate workforce development and have all along. I do think that this agreement includes some improvements over the one that we had before in that it, it specifically says even on its very first page that the economic development includes da-da-da-da-da workforce training and expansion, support economic development for socially and economically disadvantaged individuals and/or business enterprises, considering inclusion of urban economic development programs related to youth employment. That language is mainstreamed into the primary front-page definition of economic development is not relegated to mention later in the program. You might recall, and I know Lazonne has followed it quite a bit, I don't know about everybody else, but when the Garner Report came out, one of the things that Mr. Garner and his associates noted was that out of the 5 million per year that has been allocated for some time for economic development and is again, that only 2.3 million of that was, was kind of mainstreamed into the, to the Go To Pica operating budget, and I think it's 500,000 a year for the economic incentives for, if you want to call it, the big box businesses. And so it left 2.7 million a year for the JADO Board to, to appropriate in whatever ways it thought were the most important. And in fact, this year, that board began with, with Go To Pica's proposals as well, I'm looking at Scott over here, with some proposals to, to begin to allocate out of that existing 5 million a little differently than had been done before, and I was very encouraged by that. At the same time, we have millions of dollars that come into this community already for workforce development. We have a major workforce center right here in Topeka, and there was a little bit of conversation in the Garner Report, as well as later from Go To Pica staff. I'm not sure what the number is now, but I know that, obviously, in my opinion, we needed more information. As far as I'm concerned, I want to make sure that we're getting 100% of the use out of the dollars that are coming already. And I see that as a challenge to the JADO Board, to make sure that we're fully informed about what is available, what's being used and what's not, that perhaps have even tracked some folks this year or and/or in the future through that system. I don't want to fund anything extra if we've got a system that either is already available or should be working better with the dollars we already have out there for workforce development. So I personally like seeing the option to do it here, but I think it behooves all of us to make sure, and if that assignment is to Go To Pica, to do that further work. I know that the workforce center has already worked on relooking at their own program, as well as updating a master list of what else is out there, and I credit Barbara Stapleton and Scott for getting that going. It's not done yet. That loops back for me then to that responsibility that I see us all having on the JADO Board, to affirmatively do strategic planning, so that as Lazonne says, we're ahead of that. We, we work, for instance, this year to get that information out about workforce training, so we know if there are some gaps or not, and then we have time to have the workforce training system provide for gaps if we see them, if at all possible, and then if not, consider targeting our dollars. And I think that's how we need to be planning each of those sectors. So I appreciate you keeping us on point. I do think this responds, but stay on it, and hopefully we will as well. Thank you.
Okay. Are there other discussion comments? Seeing none, we have a motion in second to approve the interlocal agreement. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have seven yes. Schum and Harmon voting no.
Seven having voted yes, the interlocal agreement is approved. That completes our action items for this evening. We will go to our non-action items. We have two discussion points. If the clerk would read.
A is discussion regarding the request to annex land to the city of Topeka, Kansas in accordance with KSA 12520, located on the north side of Southwest 27th Street and Southwest Indian Hills Road, within unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the city of Topeka corporate limits.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Feinder will present information on this item and answer questions.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. This, I wanted to present to you tonight the first item here on something you don't see very much, so we thought we'd take a, a little bit of a refresher on the first half of this and then get into the specifics on the second half. So in a couple weeks, you'll be considering an annexation into the city. Like I said, you don't see these very often, but to step back and give you kind of a high level overview of annexations, there's really only two types that you really need to know about without getting too muddied in the, in the annexation languages. Consent and non-consent. Does an owner consent to annexation, or does an owner not consent to annexation? We always, before you, would always deal with owners that have consented, and that's a different, much more straightforward process than if they don't. And this all assumes that we have contiguous properties to the city. So when an owner consents and it's contiguous to the city, we just simply bring you an ordinance, you, for you to consider and bring that into the city. We provide you with all the background data in terms of whether we can provide services and that sort of thing. It's a very, there's no, nothing beyond that. If the owner doesn't consent, then, then you have to set a public hearing 60 days out. We have to do a service extension plan and notify units of government, and it gets a little more complex. That is not what we are bringing forth to you. So, so the one that is before you is a owner consent, and it involves a very recent subdivision, a four-lot subdivision in District 8, West Indian Hills, number 12, as you can see by, by the maps in your, in your handout and your packet. It is surrounded by the city. It's basically an island. And all city services, including the road, that actually 27th Street and fronts the property, Indian Hills is about 300 feet to the west. So within that area, we already maintain the roads. We have fire protection. We have police service in the area. Water, sewer will be provided from the city to the property is in the area. So when we look at annexations, we, the test is, is it affordable for us to provide services? In this case, yes. Does it make us more compact? Yes. And those were the two sort of tenants of our land use and growth management plan. We did courtesy notify property owners in the area that's surrounding this, just in case there were any questions or, so they'd be aware of it. And we held that neighborhood meeting at the planning commission. We did not receive any comments, concerns. We also notified the county and township and did not receive any comments or concerns. So with that, I'll, I'll stand for any questions regarding annexation.
Questions? Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does a piece of property like this, everything else gets annexed around it except for it?
As Councilmember Cohen, as you can see on the picture here, on the map, everything is platted in the, in the lots around there. There's, there's streets laid out. There's, there's formal subdivisions that came forward. There were some holdouts, pieces of land that did not get included in those subdivisions for whatever reason. And you can see a couple of those there that, that just ended up enveloping the city around, around those parcels.
You, the current owner, chose not to be a part of it, or for whatever reason.
For what? Correct.
Yeah. And that's, we have those sometimes holes or whatever, development around them. Councilwoman Claire.
What are some reasons someone wouldn't consent? Is it more expensive?
Councilmember Claire, there is a difference in property tax rate, although, as you know, the utility rates would be much more in their favor if they came into the city, if, if they were on sewer. Some of the properties are on, still on septic. So that's one reason, if they get brought into the city, there would be a, a clock that starts ticking to, to hook them up the sewer at some point. So that's an expense that they may not want to incur.
Another discussion. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. So what are the costs to us to bring these folks onto our infrastructure? You mentioned that we already had provided roads and maintained those and water, but, you know, we're struggling to maintain the infrastructure we have. It's my question why we would want to add to our existing burden.
Councilmember Jensen, great question. In this, in this particular, and you're right, in this particular case, we are already providing the services in the area. The one thing that we always want to be cautious of is adding to that expense. Here, 27th Street, there are no new streets. 27th Street is already maintained by the city. The developer would pay for the additional extension of water and sewer, as, and by virtue of being surrounded by the city, fire calls and police calls are already out there. So that is absorbed by virtue of already being there.
Thank you.
You've answered all of our questions about annexation.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no others, thank you for the presentation for the discussion. And City Manager, we have another discussion presentation.
B is a discussion regarding the proposed ordinance concerning planned unit development districts, amending City of Topeka Code Section 1819010, 040, and 050, and repealing original sections.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mr. Feinder is also available. He's going to talk about the planned unit development, and sometimes I think we're, we're getting into a lot of background information just to make sure that, that people in the community understand what we're talking about. Sometimes we jump through items very quickly, and I think this is a good opportunity for him to explain what a planned unit development is, how it fits into our zoning profile, and specifically how we would use it and how it really sets a standard for us going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Yes, PUDs. We're here to talk about PUDs. What are those? Planned unit developments. And I apologize, I did not put that on my, my, on the screen there, so you have to guess what PUDs are. Planned unit developments, that is one of two types of zoning that the city has. Every property in the city has, has a particular zoning district. Every property in the city has a particular zoning district overlaid on top of it, and it prescribes the types of uses you can have on your property, the setbacks, the densities. So every property has that. We call that, 95% of our lots have what we call conventional zoning. R1, C2, C4, O-N-I-2. These are districts you hear about pretty normally. And the good thing, and this is the good thing about zoning, is you want certainty. You want to make sure that if I'm living here and I want to know what my, not only what I can do, but what my neighbor can do. And I think that's, it's very important to property values and making sure that if my neighbor or across the street, somebody can do something different than what I can do, that has a tendency to have a negative effect on property values in that area. So we like certainty in the zoning world, and we like to have uniformity, if you will, for the most part. But there are times when that is not such a good thing either, and so we have another tool called a PUD, Planned Unit Development, and this is a lot more flexible zoning tool. Basically, we're building a zoning district for each, for a single property. It's like a Build-A-Bear, only with zoning closed. So this is a good thing as well. It's good for complex developments and transitions because we have a lot of areas where maybe commercial is running into residential or vice versa, and it's, that's the area we want to have some more certainty, and we can't have those in our conventional districts. So we come up with a tailor-made zoning district to address those sort of things. So that's, so that's our two types of zoning. We use probably PUDs a lot more than we used to, and we, and I think our proposal before you is to use them even more, and I'll explain why. So there are some good things with PUDs in our conventional zoning, but one thing we don't do well with our zoning is encourage adaptive reuse of buildings on small lots. We have a one-acre limitation for PUDs unless you're in what we call a transition area. Believe me, those are kind of few and far between. Transition areas are those when you go from commercial to residential. But what happens if you're in the middle of a residential area and you happen to have a unique building, a school, a church, an old, something that was built, or a large residence that may not be feasible for a single-family dwelling anymore? So over the years, we've just, we've run into some issues with, we don't want to encourage spot zoning, like remember certainty? We don't, we want uniformity, what I can do, my neighbors can do, and likewise. We don't want to introduce uncertainty into that, into that neighborhood. But PUDs actually, if we could open that, our toolbox up a little bit more and apply those to less than an acre in the reuse of a building, we could probably start to encourage more economic investment in those neighborhoods where there are some unique situations, and we would want to encourage adaptive reuse of a building and some creativity in those. So I'll give you, I'll give you a couple of examples, and then I'll, I'll stop. So one example I've mentioned is adapting a school building. Schools are allowed in residential zoning districts. They could be anywhere, but if they're on less than an acre of a site and it's no longer a school and you want to adaptively reuse it, our zone it, we'd have to come in and spot-zone it, maybe for multiple family, maybe for office, and then a whole host of things could happen there that we don't have control and certainty over. So a PUD helps us do that, or would. Other examples, we have a church in the middle of a neighborhood. This one happens to be over in Seventh and Lime. They have an administrative building over there. They used to have a church, but that's an office. That's a residential reuse for multiple family possibly. Can't do that in the current zoning. Open that up with a PUD to bring a little more flexibility there. And then lastly, the thing that really brought this to our attention, usually we wait, we're going to come back at the latter half of this year with more of a package of zoning, modernization, updates, things that we find that we need to update and keep our zone current, zoning current. One of these things we're pulling, and this is the one thing we're kind of pulling out and bringing forth sooner, a group out of Wichita, Working Men of Christ. They operate basically Christian-based halfway homes for ex-offenders. They have established some homes in other communities they have, and they're trying to establish two here, and reuse a building that was a single-family house, over 3,000 square feet, pretty large, but it was used as a group home for VA participants. And so now, in order for them to do what they want to do, they'd have to rezone the property to multiple family. We don't, we don't want to introduce that uncertainty into the middle of a neighborhood with multiple family where apartments and other parking issues and whatnot can come forth without being able to condition it. So the PUD is the tool that we can use to condition it, help to get the building reused, occupied, and benefit the neighborhood in a way that it wouldn't if it was sitting vacant. So those are my three examples, and you can maybe be able to think of others, that this tool would come in handy, but we think we need a little more opening in our, of the PUD toolbox, and so that's what we want to present as a, as a consideration here in a couple of weeks. We did take this before the Planning Commission, and they were, had a good discussion, and they were supportive of it. So stand for any questions.
Councilman Cohen. Councilman Jensen, excuse me.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have big concerns with taking single-family dwellings and splitting them down. I haven't seen that done in a case where it doesn't harm the neighborhoods. How would giving that ability, how would we prevent that from happening with adding this ability to the PUDs?
Councilmember Jensen, so in this particular case, there is a, there is a house that is used as a single-family house. It has five bedrooms, but the use of it would, we could condition it, instead of rezoning it to multiple family where you could break it up into apartments, we could condition it so that you could not break it up into apartments under a PUD, allow the use as a, as a single unit for group living, but restrict it so that it could not be further broken up into apartments. And that's something you could accomplish with this, with this PUD.
Okay. So with a PUD, it's not possible to break up a single-family home to apartments?
You would have to rezone, upzone to multiple family, and that's, that's not something we would support either.
Okay. Good deal.
So in order to protect the neighborhood against those unintended...
Now you're going where I am.
Yes, unintended consequences.
Okay.
That's what this is for.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Other questions, discussion? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to get this issue out on the table, that Working Men of Christ, I think this came out because they're interested in doing two homes, and they're both in my district. They're both in, in one of the neighborhoods in my district, and the deal is, if I can take that a little farther, because we've been through this, and I've been through this years ago now, but if, if they were going to have five gentlemen in the home, if the five just wanted to rent it together, they could, as a single-family home. In this case, this program has somebody who's there, in a staff person who's there, and that changes the nature of the residential situation and knocks it out of single-family, yet they want to be in that single-family situation. And so I really appreciate that, that the staff was creative in looking at that option. The PUD gives some leverage nonetheless for the neighborhood to look at it, and the neighborhood already has it in this case. And so it's, really appreciate the look at it.
If I might, yeah. I fully support this implementation of a PUD. I think, you know, anything we can do to help folks in that situation, and if this is going to be managed, and then, you know, as you're describing, Councilwoman Hiller, I think this is an excellent use of that residence. My concern is if you do it for one group, you have to do it for others. But what I'm understanding here is, in this case, we can tailor these so that it meets each individual group's needs and would not necessarily allow somebody else to come in and start cutting things up.
It provides more flexibility, right?
Yes.
It is a good...
And protection, really, for the neighborhood.
Right. Okay. Other comments, discussion? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it, and it's, this is, and this will be coming before us then in a form of an ordinance?
Two weeks.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Oh, counsel, it completes the non-action items. We go to announcements. There is no meeting next week because it's the fourth Tuesday, so we will proceed to the City Manager for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, you've driven out on Crane River Road in the past month or so. You've seen some very large vehicles with vacuums connected to the manholes, and this is one of the CIP project, or it's one of the projects that we saw on the CIP tour. What that is, is they're, they're cleaning out the, the east side and the Adam Street interceptors. Really what that's doing, that sucked out 700 tons of material from those large sewer interceptors up to this point. Other than making it nice and tidy, it also increases a significant amount of capacity for our system and saves us money. So this is a very, a very good and very important thing. The Curb Your Clutter event was wildly successful. I got some emails and texts from people saying that people hadn't been collected yet. I know that we have crews out there still working. It was tremendously successful, and we want to thank Shawnee County for their partnership on that project. There's a big party for the planet at the zoo this weekend, April 23rd. About 130 other zoos around the country are going to be participating. It's going to run between nine and three, and there's going to be a lot of activities with the keepers talking about various things and animals there, so that should be a lot of, lot of fun. And the last thing I want to talk about is, starting Sunday, we began a series of water breaks along Wanamaker between 17th and 21st. And while water breaks are something that we're very familiar with, the part that I want to focus on is, on the first side, just the tremendous responsiveness of the crew. The police were out there and controlled the traffic situation very quickly. Secondly, Public Works was out there, and I have to tell you, it was actually kind of, kind of fun to watch. I mean, not that we want to do that a lot, but this thing was about 70 feet in the air, and I got video, and I had, it was the biggest tourist thing I've seen for a while. There were people out there taking pictures. So that, that might be our new program.
That's a new spray park.
It'll be random.
It was a lot of, but all kidding aside, what I really want to focus there is that when we came forward to this body with, with a, using some of the money that was generated from last year's budget savings, this was one of the projects we identified, is fixing that, that water main and also making repairs on Wanamaker between 10th and 21st. So it indicates that the planning was good, and we're probably, we're in the design phase of that project. We anticipate that this summer that project will be completed. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. This is the last meeting before Cinco de Mayo, and I just want to wish everyone happy Cinco de Mayo. Be safe, enjoy it, and have a great week.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Since we won't be meeting for several weeks, I wanted to announce the Ward Mead Plant Sale is April 30th at Old Town. Be sure you go out and see the plants out there, a lot of the tulips that will be for sale. Next week, and I see Janet Shalansky in the audience, we have the Kansas Children's Service Lake Board meetings and annual boards here in Topeka, and I'm on that board, so I'll be enjoying those meetings. And then I wanted to remind everybody that Jump is at the Downtown Armada Inn at 7:00 PM on Tuesday night, and they're going to be talking about housing in Topeka. And the Designer Show House starts this week, next week. I'll be working next Tuesday at that. And my gem of Topeka is, according to Spurling's BestPlaces.com, their ratings, Topeka has a lot of best things, and one of our best things is our religious communities. Our jump is like 18 churches that have come together. The Shepherd Center is 22 churches that have, and I think the synagogue has, come together. And Howard and I will be speaking at the Shepherd Center this Friday on Justice McFarland's legacies. But I just think, I wanted to read what Spurling said. 47.48% of the people in Topeka are religious, meaning they affiliate with a religion. 14.25% are Catholic, 1.8 are, what is that, LDS? Maybe nondescript. 7.58 are another Christian faith. .16 in Topeka are Jewish, .01 are Eastern faith, and .08 affiliate with Islam. So we're right there in the middle because the United States is 48.78%, and we're at 47.5. Olatha is 54%, Wichita 51%, Manhattan 35%, Lawrence 31%. So I want to acknowledge that we do have an awesome religious community, faith community in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Passover.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a neighborhood association meeting next Tuesday, April 26th, for Meadowcrest, and some city staff will be there this time to talk about some of the neighborhoods that are at risk in District Eight, which would be on the east side of my district. I'd also like to, since there's 47% of Tepicans that are, yeah, faith-based and declare faith, I'd like to invite you once again to Franklin Graham, is going to be at the Capitol Building on April 28th at noon, which is one week from Thursday, so I hope to see you guys there. It's going to be a really big event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harmon. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some quick thank-yous. The Police Department was fabulous in their support of the District One Follow-Up Crime Summit, which was last Saturday, as was Department of Neighborhood Relations and Safe Streets. Really appreciate that, and it went well. Coffee with a Cop was the day before, actually, on the east side, and a week before on the west side. I was only able to get to one on the east side, which is actually at Deer Creek, even though we're in central Topeka, but they had 70 or 80 people there. It was, it was really great. So obviously worthwhile to do from time to time. Downtown, there, we had the dedication of the Second Pocket Park yesterday, Bartlett and West installation with the steel ball and the big pencil. I recommend that everybody go by, especially at night, and get out, be on foot, and go touch that pencil and make the lights change, and light up the parking garage there at Cumulus as well as there on the sidewalk. It's pretty fun. I want to thank the Public Works Department. I've had two hearings in the last week on our street projects, 7th to 11th, on Topeka Boulevard was reasonably attended. That's a major street. People took it more for granted, but we did have people right along the way, and they're being really careful on how they stage that in terms of people getting in and out of businesses and neighborhoods, and really appreciate that. And then the big one for us was Clay Street from 6th to 10th. You all are familiar with the, based on the staff's nominations the other day anyway, with how bad streets are in the historic Old Town neighborhood. Clay Street from 6th to 10th did roll up, but instead of being just a mill and overlay, they're going to dig up the whole street, and people weren't expecting that, and we've gone through a lot of involvement with the neighborhood. We appreciate it a lot. It's, it's going to be great. It'll take two seasons just because of the pace of, of all the work, but we have two schools, Care Paraval, as well as Modern Day on that run, but they, they've really worked with everyone, and it will be brick when it comes back as well, and they're for maintenance-free for 100 years. We're pretty excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clear.
I don't really have anything. I get to go to my first military ball this weekend with Sheepdog. I'm excited about that. I have students in Osage coming to Graham. They were, came in and showed me, they were so excited about that, so that was good. And on my downtime between school and my council meeting, I watched my recorded Scorpion show, and they mentioned Topeka.
They did?
Yes, I had to back it up, and I had to, just to really see it. I thought, whoa, whooping on Scorpion.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was supposed to go first, but Mr. Jensen went first, but that's okay, Mr. Mayor. It's okay. I'm like a kid tonight, huh?
Thank you. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to pick on Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen, the Fire Department is waiting for your information to bring out...
Actually, I've already provided it through a different mechanism, so they're looking at it now.
I was told that when I walked in the door, so. They're waiting on your information, so submit it again, if you would, please. This Thursday is the Metro in observance for Earth Day. There's no pay, so everybody get on the bus. The Saturday is Get Down and Get Dirty, so get with Felicia Keys, and you can do that. And I'd like to invite every one of you to the East Topeka Crime Summit, the mayor included, the city manager, and constituents. Also...
When is that?
What is?
When?
Oh, when? I'm sorry. It's next Tuesday, since we don't have a council meeting at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's at Highland Park High School. And it starts at 5:30, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome, and it's gonna be better than Karen Hiller's, I bet.
Of course.
Anyway, second one's always better. I, I want to bring up a couple of things. City manager, I got a couple of calls today and a couple of emails regarding the sewer closure. I told several people to email the whole council. Can we double-check to make sure that our detours are good, because there's several cars going everywhere, and they feel like there's just, it's just an accident waiting to happen. I, I know it's a little bit unusual, and I know that spot in Oakland is, is very unique, but I just want to make sure that our detours are, so that everybody understands, and sometimes I understand that happens. I'd like to give a big shout-out to Jackie with HR and her crew, and I don't see Monique or Sasha here. We had 168 applicants, and that's only, I believe, A through K of our youth. So pat yourself on the back that we put that money in the budget, and hopefully we will put more money. And I tell you what, I walked in there, they were teasing me. They said, "Are you coming in to get a job?" I said, "Well, let me see." You know, one of the things that Monique Lade did is, when she put that packet together, her and Sasha, they put on there to come dressed to impress, and also dressed to interview. And when I was walking in, I seen these young men in ties and suits, and I didn't see any sagging pants or T-shirts. It was awesome, and I wanted about 50 more jobs to give them, you know? But I'm gonna come back with a total, so you guys can see what for, how many people $40 they do hire. But it is, it is excellent to see that our young people, they had their little sachets, and you know, they were dressed smelling good, and they were nervous, but our next interview process will be tomorrow, and I think that's M through, I want to say R. I'm not real sure, but is that right, Jackie? M through R? Okay, well, somewhere in there, it's in the middle, and we'll have another go-round. Our Job Corps kids were telling them where to go, where to sit down, and, and it was awesome. It was very well organized. They were in and out of there. Their parents brought them, and, and I just hope we can get more money to fund them, and that they'll be a part, and feel like they'll have that on their, that they can put on their resume. City manager, you did mention curb on the clutter, or clutter on the curb. We've changed the name so many times, I'm getting confused here. Are we gonna continue all week to pick that up? Because I'm still seeing a lot in East Topeka, that, tons of it. So I just want to make sure, are we gonna continue to do that all week? How, how is that gonna be handled, so I can answer those phone calls?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz, let me verify. The answer to the question is yes. We're gonna continue to, to meet the expectations of people. I think the response was even greater than it had been in the past, so yes, we're going to make sure that everything is picked up.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that we, we mentioned that, so I'll know how to answer that. So ahead, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schum.
Thank you. Again, like to reiterate that we do have the Anti-Crime Summit coming up, the 26th, next Tuesday, 5:30. Hope to see you there. Also wanted to say to my fellow governing body members that I just want to thank you for what we've been able to accomplish this past year. We've solidified the metro budget. We continued to address the riverfront. We found money for the arts, as we mentioned earlier tonight, for streetlights, which is a long time coming. Thank you, Councilwoman Schwartz. We've had public input and a study for a new KTA entrance on I-470. We've stayed on course for California street to be completed. We've added miles of new sidewalks, street improvements, and repairs all across town. We've provided new contracts for our fire department and our police officers, including a well-deserved raise for our men and women in blue, all things that we, as a council, can be proud of. We continue to address the blight of unsafe and abandoned houses in Topeka, regardless of what the governor says. And we continue to demand more accountability from GoToPica and Jado. We, as a body, have committed to continuing to spend money to get Topeka's streets restored and rebuilt. I'm incredibly blessed to have formed friendships with all nine of you, including Deputy Mayor De La Isla, who couldn't be here tonight. You have stood together and truly acted as a second family to me. I deeply appreciate the support of my NIAs and my Neighborhood Association, and I believe I've learned how to better advocate for my community. However, in order to best serve my family's needs and to honor my agreement with the District Attorney's Office, I am submitting my resignation from my city council position, effective noon tomorrow. I am proud of what this council has accomplished, and of my chance to serve District 4 and the entire city along each one of you. Thank you.
Councilman Schum, I would like to speak on behalf of the city and the council. You have provided extraordinary service to the city and to your district. You have been, you diligently prepare for meetings. Folks, he has notes. He is so concise in his comments, I wish we could all be as concise as he is. He says his, very well, you can tell it's thought out, it's meaningful, and it's so appropriate to the occasion. You also have participated, attended events throughout the city. I see you there at many events. So all of this together, I think you have, well, you have been an exemplary council member. The city is indebted. Your service has been excellent, and we wish you the best on behalf of the city. Thank you, thank you very much for what you have contributed. With that, complete announcements, we go to public comment. First to speak is Janet Shalansky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Janet Shalansky. I've come here before, but today I'm wearing the hat as a Jump member. I'm not on the executive committee or staff. I'm a member, I represent Loman United Methodist Church as a member of the group. I don't know if you all had the opportunity to read the editorial yesterday in the Capitol Journal. I thought they did an excellent job of explaining the history of Jump. If you all remember Jump, about three years ago, we got off to a real rocky start, and had, our first NEOMIA action was pretty negatively received. But I think, as said in the editorial, I think the organizers realized that a little less aggressive advocacy worked in Topeka a little better. I would, though, thank Dr. Julie Ford of 501. Even though we got off to a rocky start, she worked, and the program for kids and education has continued to grow since that first year. Last year, the goal was mental health. The county gave us 100,000, gave, excuse me, the mental health system $100,000, and they continue to work to do that. This year, the broad area that we learned from having house, they call them house meetings in our individual churches, and now we're up to 20 churches, continues to grow. And we came as a group to vote on this, on the topic, and this year it was housing and economic disparity, and you've already heard some of that this evening from other members about that being an issue. My past life, I spent 30 years working with SRS, and then another eight with Kansas Children's Service League. So most of my career has been spent in, in working and trying to make the lives of those who are disadvantaged, whether by disability or poverty. And the one thing that I appreciate about the work that Jump has done is that they take a very broad topic, and they narrow it down to one thing that they think can be accomplished. I served on a lot of committees with broad topics, and it seemed like we never got anywhere. The other thing that I've appreciated about Jump, if you read the research they do, it's very concise, it's very thorough, very factual, and I think also unbiased. I've been very impressed with, with the research that they've done. This year, as they, they looked at transportation, they looked at different housing issues, they just, they, they talked and appreciated very much meeting with city, city manager Colson, that possibly one of the ways that we could attack the housing issue was by a housing trust fund here in Topeka. Now, I don't, I can't tell you a thing about it, but I'm gonna learn about it next week at the NEOMIA action. And as, as Councilwoman Schwartz invited you, I would also invite you, after you go to the crime summit at 5:30 at Highland Park, come to the Ramada Inn at 7:00 for the NEOMIA action. I think you've all been invited individually, and I just reinstate that. I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope I'll see you at 7 o'clock next week.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Next is Vic Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I think, as you said, my name is Vic Miller, I'm at least 47% religious. I wanted to talk about a program the city has. It's a wonderful program. It's referred to by various names, but it's called, at this point, Franchise Fee Credit Program, which, as you all know, entitles people who qualify to some relief on their utility bills. The problem that I've seen over the years, and I certainly have experienced that the last several months, people don't know about this program. I found myself with some time on my hands a few months ago, so in looking at some of the things I might do that were productive, both internally as well as benefiting other people, I took it upon myself to begin to spread the word about this program. There are, I would guess, thousands of people in our community who qualify, who don't know about this program. I've talked to and helped hundreds of them process their application in the last two and a half months. The problem is, is that I think I created a problem. As you, I think, received, last week a release was issued by the agency that administers the program for the city, the CRC, that indicates that we are only into April. The deadline for applying is September, but according to the release, only 38% of the money, or only 30% is left of funds that were appropriated to satisfy the need. I will continue to spread the word to all those people that I haven't gotten to yet, and there are, I expect, hundreds more that I will personally encounter, as well as those that I won't. They exist in every district. They are infirm. They are elderly. I've met two people that were 102 years old. Fascinating experience for me, but they are disabled. They are single parents with dependent children. These are the criteria. First, you have to meet an income threshold, but then you have to meet the three criteria of being old enough, or having children, or permanently disabled. They don't have computers, many of them. They don't know about being online. They don't have access to the information that you and I do, and therefore they are unaware that they are entitled to this money, this relief, actually. But upon learning of the availability of it, they are absolutely ecstatic about the relief. Many of them are staring at utility cutoff bills. That's how desperate they are for relief. I would urge this council to work with the city manager to find somewhere in the 90-plus million-dollar general fund, some additional funds to extend this program to anybody that qualifies until September 1st, so that no one is told by CRC, "Sorry, we have to deny your application because we're out of money." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your comments, for your information. Next to speak is Lazon Grayz.
Thank you again, City Councilmember of Mayor. Lazon Grayz, concerned citizen of Topeka. I want to commend you, Councilwoman Schum, for your leadership, and I appreciate watching you operate and being a good voice for the community, and I wish you all the best in everything that you work towards. I'm gonna sort of follow up on something I was mentioning when I was speaking before, and that was about the juvenile justice reforms that have passed. And there is, I'm not sure if many people know about, I mean, I've just read that it passed the House, signed by the governor. So for those who don't know, there is a community meeting that is gonna be April 30th at Hillcrest Community Center, and the youth meeting is at 9:30 AM, and the adult meeting is at 11:00 AM. And I'm going to share this with the city clerk, so she can get copies to you all. And it says, "Come learn about the changes happening in the Kansas juvenile justice system, and how youth and parents can speak up for their communities." And I mention that because the, this is a transfer of a lot of millions of dollars from detention and corrections into communities for more community-based rehabilitation programs. That's gonna be on top of whatever money is spent from the city or the county. I would think that elected officials can make more informed decisions if they have all of the information. Instead of hearing it from me, and I may sit on the Kansas Advisory Group for Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, but I cannot explain what this Juvenile Justice Reform Act means by a group that is more prepared to do so. And so I would hope that someone from the city and other city leaders would be able to attend that, so that they can hear it from the horse's mouth, so that it can help in your planning and deliberations down the road. The same that I had mentioned when I came and mentioned about, as soon as the HOPE Act was passed, and that welfare reform, because I don't know if you are getting this information, if you know any of this. The same with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. I think that, I'm not sure if the mayor, if you were on the Workforce Investment Board...
Yes.
Yes. And so, not only is it an informed public, I think that there should be an informed public just as well. So many people sit in on meetings, and the public don't know. They go into meetings and it just sort of stops there. I think it would sort of be a good practice that if you're sitting on meetings where they're discussing things, where organizations, individuals are not privy to the room, that there has to be some type of a briefing, so that all of you know what these state policies or federal policies mean, and how they're going to impact the local community. It doesn't always just come out in the Capitol Journal. So I just think that that would be better planning, and there is, as I had mentioned before, criminal justice reform. This year, juvenile justice reform was said is probably the only bipartisan bill that would be passed, you know, collectively, and everybody was for it. I think that both sides understand also for criminal justice for the adults just as well. And that's something that's coming around, and I'm going to try to play a role and be a part of that just as well, because, again, people are gonna be coming back into our communities, they're gonna be needing opportunity, and instead of it just happening and not being prepared, I believe that it's probably just good policy and good governance, that if you stay engaged and prepare and make a decision. So I won't be able to make it, because I have another job on Saturday, but I would hope to encourage you to attend this, so that you can be on the edge of the information on this juvenile justice reform.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That completes the public comment for this evening. We have one executive session. If the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion would be that the governing body recess into executive session for a period of 15 minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding potential litigation that requires privileged attorney-client communication. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: elected officials, city manager Jim Colson, deputy city manager Doug Gerber, assistant city attorney Nick Jefferson, and myself.
Is there a motion to go into, Councilwoman Hiller moves, and Councilman Jensen seconds, to go into the executive session at 15?
to go into the executive session in 15 minutes? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
You did say.
We have nine voting yes. We will go into executive session. We did want to announce that the city clerk will be posting tomorrow the parameters for filling the vacant seat on the council. So that will be made public tomorrow. All right. We will go into a session when the room is adjourned.